Okay Chair, you're live.
Okay, good morning everybody and welcome to Norwich City Council Licensing Subcommittee. It's Friday 12th of February 2021 and we have today a hearing for application review of licence premises Bedford's one old post office yard Norwich NR21SL. We'll start with decorations of interest please. And I can see there are none and apologies. No, okay, so I'll introduce members of the panel and everybody on the call. My name is councillor Ian Stuteley, I'm the chair today. We have councillor Nenette Yusef, councillor Caroline Ackroyd. We have David Lowens who is our legal advisor today from NP Law. Richard Divy from Norwich City Council. We have Tiffany Bentley who's our licensing officer. And we have Lucy who is our committee officer this morning. Michelle from the police, Richard Spinks, PC Richard Spinks. And then I'll hand over to the other screen and ask you to introduce yourselves please.
I'm Bruce Faulkner from Rogers and Norton. I'm the legal representative for the premises licence holder. And I have with me Glenn Carr who is the premises licence holder in DPS. And Jonathan Carr who manages the premises on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, thank you and welcome to everybody. Okay, so first of all, I think we need to start with item number three on our agenda. And that is the the application review. And I'll hand over to Tiffany who will read the report, please.
Okay, thank you. Members are asked in accordance with the delegation of licensing functions contained in the Norwich City Council's Statement of Licensing Policy, Licensing Act 2003, to consider an application made by Richard Divy, Public Protection Officer for Norwich City Council to review the premises licence in respect of Bedford's number one old post office yard Norwich. Recommendation is the members determine the review application in accordance with the Licensing Act 2003, the guidance issued under section 182 of the Licensing Act 2003 and Norwich City Council's Statement of Licensing Policy. Moving to the main body of the report. The Act provides a mechanism by which, following the grant of a premises licence, a responsible authority or any other person may ask the licensing authority to review the licence because of matters arising at the premises in connection with any of the four licensing objectives: prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, prevention of public nuisance and the protection of children from harm. The licensing authority must advertise the review by displaying a notice at, on or near the site of the premises to which the application relates and at the main offices of the licensing authority. Notification of an application is also displayed on the Norwich City Council website. The Act provides the licensing authority with a range of powers that it may exercise on determining a review where it considers them appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. However, the licensing authority may decide that no action is necessary if it finds that the review does not require it to take any steps appropriate to promote the licensing objectives. Where a licensing authority considers that action under its statutory powers is necessary, it may take any of the following steps: To modify the conditions of the premises licence, which includes adding new conditions or any alteration or omission of an existing condition, for example by reducing the hours of opening or by requiring door supervisors at particular times; To exclude a licenceable activity from the scope of the licence; To remove the designated premises supervisor, for example because they consider that the problems are the result of poor management; To suspend the licence for a period not exceeding three months and to revoke the licence. It should be noted that modifications of conditions and exclusions of licenceable activities may be imposed either permanently or for a temporary period up to three months. The following parties have a right of appeal to the Mandatate Court if they are aggrieved by the licensing authority's decision: the applicant for the review, the holder of the premises licence and any other person who made relevant representations in relation to the application. The application to review the premises licence at Bedford's one old post office yard Norwich is received from Richard Divy, Public Protection Officer for Norwich City Council. Copy of the application is attached as appendix A. The grounds for review fall under the licensing objective of prevention of crime and disorder and public safety. Copy of the existing licence and auditing schedule is attached as appendix B to the report. Current premises licence holder and designated premises supervisor is Mr Glenn Carr. The responses from the responsible authorities are as follows: Police representation received with a copy attached as appendix C. Public protection is the applicant in this review. Fire officer comments were received, the copy is attached as appendix D. Planning officer, no representations. Area Child Protection Committee, no representations. Training standards, no representations. And the primary care chest of public health, no representations. Additional paperwork has been received from the police which includes two statements relating to an ongoing investigation, copy is attached as appendix E. Attached to appendix F are the elements of the city council's local licensing policy which are considered to have a bearing on the application. And appendix G is the elements of the national guidance issued by the Secretary of State that are considered to have a bearing on the application. In determining the application with a view to promoting the licensing objectives, the subcommittee must give appropriate weight to the steps that are appropriate to promote the licensing objectives, either prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, prevention of public nuisance and the protection of children from harm. The representations include supporting information presented by all the parties, the guidance issued under section 182 of the Licensing Act 2003, the council's own statement of licensing policy. Subcommittee must take such of the following steps as it considers appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives: To modify the conditions of the premises licence, which includes adding new conditions or any alteration or omission of an existing condition; To exclude a licenceable activity from the scope of the licence; To suspend the licence for a period not exceeding three months; To revoke the licence; To remove the designated premises supervisor, for example because they consider that problems are the result of poor management. Subcommittee is asked to note it should not carry out any of the steps set out in the paragraph above, paragraph 15, apologies for the error in that, paragraph 15 above, because it considers it desirable to do so, it must actually be appropriate in order to promote the licensing objectives. And just one final statement if I made it, so the additional papers and footage served by Mr Divy in support of the review application have been circulated. I can confirm that the licence holder and his legal advisor have had copies of everything electronically as well. And that concludes the report. You're on mute Chair.
Thank you, it won't be the first time. I can confirm that we've had sight of the papers and we've had a chance to read them ourselves as the committee, so thank you for the report. David would like to just cover the legal requirements that the committee have today please.
Chair, thank you.
And the reason why we're here.
As preliminary, just so the premises licence holder and his representative knows what papers you've seen, you've seen the agenda papers, you've had an opportunity to see some social media footage, you've seen additional papers, emails. And I understand that committee has also seen a public letter on the Facebook page of the premises. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, but as far as I'm aware, that is the extent of the matters that have been read by the councillors. Regarding the process today, obviously you'll be considering whether any matter is proved of concern. If any matter is proved or admitted, you'll be considering the way to give to it with respect to the licensing objectives. If there are proved concerns, you'll be attempting to identify the cause of them and consider what remedial action, if any, is appropriate. Any action to be directed at the cause or causes and as I say, it should be no more than appropriate and proportionate. Regarding any crime matter, the local authority's job is to promote the crime prevention objective and take appropriate steps.
Okay, thank you for that David, yes, so it's important for the committee to remember that each hearing, each review is considered on its own merits and any others should be disregarded for this particular review. Okay, and so I think we'll have the applicant speak now, does that seem appropriate David?
Chair, it's up to you and frankly, it's a fairly relaxed process. Personally, I think it's more useful if Richard was to present and the police were to present, as then the applicant knows the case that they are needing to respond to. That would personally be how I'd do it.
Thank you, yes, what I was thinking more in terms of introductions and a brief outline, but actually let's go with that and I'll ask Richard Divy to present the case for the hearing piece for the review, thank you.
Yes, thank you members for considering this review application. As it become apparent, this review of premises licence is as a result of complaints first received about the premises on the 5th of November 2020. Over the next few days, further complaints came from seven members of the public about the night of the 4th of November 2020, which they had viewed on social media. Some of those complainants sent copies of that footage and others found that this had been deleted before they could send it in. That social media footage showed a party with very close contact between customers and staff that involved no signs of social distancing at all. Contact was made with the venue who responded to say that they would supply the CCTV footage of the evening as we asked them to. Credit should be given that at this first stage of contact Glenn Carr admitted that there had been problems that occurred on the evening of the 4th of November and gave a full and frank admission in his email of the 11th of November. The social media footage supplied by the multiple members of the public showed dancing on tables and other actions that in normal times, without the health regulations in force, it would be described as a very good party. And this is reflected in some of the social media comments such as crazier than New Year's Eve 2019 and pretty sure that this night's antics will stay with me for life. And also hashtag if you know, you know. These videos that we'll be showing do fleetingly show that the owner Glenn Carr was present and more directly his son who is the manager of the premises Jonathan Carr was present. Jonathan does appear to be at the centre of the party and possibly even leading celebrations. Due to ill health, it was some time before the CCTV could be supplied to Norwich City Council. And unfortunately, the footage of the night from most of the cameras was no longer available. So we just have partial footage from one camera. This is likely due to the automatic overwriting of the hard drive on the CCTV system and checks were made by the venue to see if these could be recovered. But as per the engineer's report that is attached to this hearing, the footage had been lost, i.e. overwritten by the system. This is not an offence as there was no condition on the licence stating that CCTV must be supplied on request. And that is something I'm sure that committee will consider changing. The CCTV supply did however show the bar area. When viewed, that is the main bar area, I believe there are more than one bars, bar in the premises. When viewed, the footage showed that the venue was not adequately social distancing with staff hugging and kissing being common throughout the night. Staff were also seen to regularly hug, shake hands and make contact with customers throughout the night. This was in breach of coronavirus legislation in force at the time, as was allowing customers to sit at tables of more than six, allowing customers move between tables without cleaning them and to also mix with other groups of six within the venue. I would have expected that these issues would be missed in venues at some time in most venues, you know, the, it's very difficult to run a pub without some sort of issue of this type occurring. But in this case however, there appeared to be no attempt to control and after the initial seating of the customers and at times staff members joined tables of up to nine other customers and drank at the same table. Yes, after entry, very little mask wearing was observed by customers and almost nil by any staff members at all, even when in close contact with customers. These are also breaches of legislation in force at the time. Complaints had been received about them from the members of the public about the lack of social distancing before this evening, but all appeared to be in order during visits by police and council officials. Unappropriate measures were seen to be in place at the times of those visits. On 22nd of December 2020, after viewing the CCTV footage and reviewing the other information we had, a review hearing was applied for by Richard Divy. Norfolk Police later referred some footage of the outside area of the premises obtained during an assault allegation dated the 23rd of December. The investigating officer referred this footage as they were surprised by the lack of social distancing before, during and after the incident by staff and members of the public who appeared to be customers of the business. Upon viewing the footage, it was not evident that a further lockdown was imminent at that time and no social distancing measures were seen to be enforced by staff. Historically, the venue has had a very low number of incidents and complaints and has always appeared to be well contained, controlled, sorry. After the first lockdown ended, noise complaints and other complaints were received. We received one in August, three in September and four in October. Due to the massive increase in complaints during this time, which do include a single day where we received 60 complaints about evening venues, very few coordinated enforcement visits were carried out at this venue, obviously due to the amount of work that was on, time at any particular venue was limited. Although the venue and its management have a very good record, I believe that the committee does still need to consider the revocation of the premises licence for the following reasons. If I can first refer you to page 42 of the committee papers at item number 20, which is the prevention of crime and disorder licensing objective and more specifically point you to item number 20.2. It's the responsibility of the licence holder to become a key partner in achieving this objective, the prevention of crime and disorder. And in this case, the licence holder and management have failed to meet those points at 20.3 in preventing, although specifically they aren't defined in those points, I will go on to suggest that they should be taken as equivalent of those points. And then specifically, I would suggest that the main point here is the keeping illegal activity like, obviously it's not drug dealing or offensive weapons, but could be seen to be equivalent to sales of contraband or other offences of that like kind. And then also at point 20.4, effective and responsible management of the premises, this I believe that the management failed to do. If I can further refer you to appendix G on page 52. At point 11.27. This is a list of offences that appear to be serious criminal activity. I believe that this offence should be considered twas being of the same level of seriousness, being that it put the population of this country at risk of serious harm by failing to control the licence. And therefore, as per point 11.28, the licensing authority should consider revocation of licence even in the first instance.
Okay, thank you for that, Richard Divy. I think maybe we'll have questions for Richard in a moment and also I think we'll hear from Michelle and your letter that we, the committee has seen is I believe on page, is it on page 20 of the report? No, it's not. It is on, sorry, page 30 of the report for members of the public and the committee. Michelle please.
Thank you, yeah, thanks. I'm here on behalf of Norfolk Constabulary supporting the review of the premises licence for Bedford's for breaches of the coronavirus restrictions. Norfolk Police were first made aware of this incident when I received an email. The email received was titled absolutely shocked and included two different video clips of the premises taken from social media. The footage is believed to have been filmed at Bedford's on the 4th of November, which was the night before the second lockdown and shows a large group of approximately 30 to 40 people singing, hugging and dancing together as if they were filmed in a pre-COVID era. The coronavirus restrictions at this time meant that pubs and bars could be open but with tight restrictions in place. This included that customers were to be fully seated, no congregating at the bar, no dancing or singing permitted, face coverings to be worn by staff and customers when moving and social distancing measures in place. The footage provided to police shows none of these things. The only acknowledgement that this event was during COVID is that one male who was singing with the group was wearing a surgical mask wrapped around his neck but not on his face. Following receipt of this footage, Richard Divy of Norwich City Council contacted Mr Carr on the 10th of November, informing him of the allegation and requested to see the CCTV footage from inside the venue. We were aware that Mr Carr was having medical treatment and didn't want to chase the footage at this time. On the 27th of November, I received a call from Mr Carr informing me that he was going to reopen after the lockdown. He was aware that the premises needed to provide a meal with alcohol and was arranging for pizzas to be served and wanted further clarification. During this conversation, I informed him that I was aware of the incident on the 4th of November and reminded him that the council was still wanting to see the CCTV footage. He did advise and admit at the time that the customers on the night began to sing and dance and that it shouldn't have happened. In relation to the CCTV, he informed me he would get this done and he hoped it would be after the weekend and early the following week. To assist him, I offered to meet him at the premises to collect the CCTV. Mr Carr failed to provide the CCTV, so a follow-up visit took place with PC Spinks and Richard Divy on the 11th of September. The officers informed Mr Carr that if they did not receive the footage, there would be a review of the premises licence. The next day, the 12th of December, Richard Divy received an email from Mr Carr, which was more than a month after the first request, to say that there had been problems with the CCTV and included a report from Hughes Security. Some footage of earlier of the night, the same night, was provided but not of the actual incident. Mr Carr admitted that the incident occurred on his email on the 11th of November to police and council, which stated, and I quote, that it was around 9.30 that the night came to a close, everyone in the room decided to have a protest at the current rules and regulations and they took it on themselves to have one last hurrah, dancing and shouting up and down, down with the government and Boris and up with Bedford's bar. Faced with this protest, rightly or wrongly, I decided that the safest thing was to let it pan out as there were less than 25 minutes to go rather than deal with 30 to 40 fairly drunk, hyped up youngsters who were on a mission to show their feelings. At no point are staff or management seen to intervene by turning off the music, raising the lights or asking customers to stop. One of the social media videos includes Mr Carr standing to the side and watching it all. But more importantly, Mr Carr's son Jonathan Carr, who works at the premises and believes to be general manager, is seen in the middle of the group singing and joining in instead of trying to stop it. I am also aware of comments relating to Mr Jonathan Carr's social media account. In particular, there is one photograph which shows him in the venue, holding one bottle of what looks like champagne in one hand and one other being directly poured into his mouth and this photo has a title which says a historical lockdown party. As mentioned by Mr Divy, there's also comments on there which says until next time at Bedford's Norwich and was crazier than New Year's Eve 2019 with a shush emoji next to it. This irresponsible act appears to have been celebrated on social media by the owner's son. The earlier footage of the same night on the 4th of November was requested by Norwich City Council. I believe this was in the hope that it would show the premises in a good light prior. Having viewed this footage, it shows that the venue and, the venue management and staff have a relaxed attitude towards the restrictions with them hugging each other and customers numerous times. The CCTV also shows concerns relating to licensing. Specifically at 20.59 hours, the manager Jonathan Carr and another staff member are seen downing shots and drinking a bottle each behind the bar whilst another staff member takes a photo. With the staff intoxicated, they are less likely to manage the premises responsibly and this proves to be the case with the party. Following the failure to provide CCTV, Richard Divy submitted papers for a review of the premises licence on the 22nd of December. Despite this review, further COVID breaches have been taken place at the premises after this time and this has been evidenced due to the incident which occurred on the 23rd of December. This incident, as mentioned, is still an ongoing police investigation, so I feel that we need to discuss this more in private. The footage was provided by the venue to assist with the investigation as the incident started outside the premises. The footage does show customers congregating and mixing and no control of patrons. There appears to be no distinction between staff management and customers at the premises and the footage on the 4th of November and the 23rd of December supports this. Norfolk Police have not had any previous concerns relating to disorderly behaviour at the premises before. However, on viewing the footage of the 23rd of December, there are now concerns that the venue management do not call police when incidents occur. And there's a further incident which is shown on the chronology, on the 5th of September, where an ambulance control contacted police to advise that a male had been assaulted there. It was the control room that called us from the ambulance rather than the venue management. The incidents relating to disorder are not the main reason that we're here for the review today and if the incident on the 23rd of December occurred on its own, the premises management would have been subject to some formal intervention without the need of a premises review. However, it has been included as part of this review as it supports the concerns relating to the lack of control of patrons and the lack of responsibility, which appear to be relevant in this case. Mr Carr has been at the premises as DPS and licence holders since 2017 and has had a good working relationship with police, having assisted with police inquiries by providing CCTV in the past. Examples of this include crimes that were recorded on the 12th of July and the 10th of October. Therefore, not to be provided footage specifically asked for on the, of the fourth of November is unusual and suspicious. There is a condition attached to the premises licence relating to CCTV, and this states that CCTV will be installed throughout the premises. Due to the condition not specifying the number of days the footage needs to be recorded, there has not technically been a breach of this condition. However, it could be construed that the purpose of the condition is to assist police with investigations and promote the licensing objectives. The failure to provide CCTV has not occurred before, but the current condition relating to CCTV should be considered if the licence were to remain. In terms of the lockdown party, this level of disregard to the coronavirus restrictions within a licensed premise has shocked the public and other traders. The social media footage has outraged the other licensees in our city as the vast majority of them are bent over backwards to operate within the restrictions to help customers and staff stay safe despite the financial loss. We are in unprecedented times and breaching the coronavirus restrictions is a serious matter which threatens the lives and health of those at the premises and the wider public. The undermining of the licensing objectives have clearly been evidenced, in particular, the prevention of crime and disorder and public safety. To summarise, Norfolk Police are of the opinion that this is a serious offence under the public health regulations and we support the review request by Norwich City Council. We feel it is for the Licensing Committee to determine the appropriate action following the evidence heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Michelle. Are there any questions for both Michelle and Richard before we turn to the applicant and their representative at this stage? Okay, I've just got a question for perhaps Michelle or Richard. And that is, how do complaints about this venue during the lockdown periods compare to other venues? Would you say that there are a similar number or less or more than other venues of a similar type and size?
Chair, before there's a response there, just to flag that you do need to consider this review hearing on its own merits and data as to what may be happening in other places. It's frankly not clear what relevance that would have to you.
Okay, my, the reason for my question was because Richard mentioned that there were a number of complaints across the city. I think he said sixty. So obviously, Richard considered that to be relevant. So I just wondered how that compared and how that was spread across the venues. If you believe that I shouldn't have an answer to that, I will withdraw the question.
Yeah, okay. If I could just ask or just sort of include something that, obviously, from a police point of view, we didn't get excessive amounts of complaints about, specifically about COVID. We would have followed those up if they opened the case. We did get the odd one, which you can see on the chronology, in particular on the thirty first of October, which was followed up, and then when officers attended, they didn't see any issues with COVID at the time. So there have been visits where we have turned up as a result of complaints, the odd one, and there weren't any sort of issues raised, but in particular, nothing excessive from a police perspective.
Okay, thank you. Right, I didn't see any indications from others. So we won't have a specific answer to that question now. So I'll ask, please, if Bruce Faulkner and the two applicants, please, if you'd like to present your case.
Thank you. You refer to us as the applicants. Strictly speaking, I think Richard is the applicant. We are the respondent to this because it's a review rather than an application.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm having trouble hearing.
Is that?
Speak up a little.
Is that, is that better now?
A little, yeah. I can hear you.
Right. The, yeah, so as I say, we, I'm going to speak for both Mr Carrs. They are both here and they're happy to take questions. And I may ask them to elaborate on certain points as we go through this. Can I just, before, before we sort of start, can I just clarify what has sort of been seen by the, the committee in respect of the video evidence, et cetera? Because I don't know, I don't know whether, whether the intention is that Richard's going to go, take us through bits that he wants to refer to or, or whether we're taking it as read that you've all seen it.
Yes, okay. We have not seen the CCTV footage yet. David, can you clarify what we have seen, please?
It's a good question from Mr Faulkner because, of course, you have not yet received all the evidence of the applicant. You have seen a limited amount, I think barely five minutes, of social media footage. And that, as far as I know, is all you have seen. In fact, a five minutes may be doing it a favour, it's probably more like two to three.
Yes.
Yes, the videos were a few snippets, a video taken from social media, and that's all we've seen at this stage.
I'd just flag with Mr Faulkner that, of course, when further evidence is presented, I would expect, and I'm sure the chair would be happy to allow further questions to be put. So this isn't, as it were, the licence holder's only opportunity to ask questions.
I'm grateful. It's really because, because in order to deal with the evidence as it sort of is presented, I need to know, obviously, what, what the evidence that the committee have seen is. Essentially, our case is that we, we fully accept that there was a breach of the, effectively of the licensing conditions towards the end of the night. This was the, the last night before lockdown. And for the vast majority of the evening, as you will see when shown the CCTV footage, or to a certain extent where you, the bits that you don't see, because there is about three hours worth, and I'm hopeful that Richard's not going to go through the whole three hours. He will be here for a very long time. But for the vast majority of the evening, there were no, no issues. It was a quiet night with proper social distancing and people behaving themselves. Mr Carr has, right from the very, the very beginning of this, when the incident was first raised with him, accepted that towards the end of the, the very end of the evening, about the last twenty five to thirty minutes, there was dancing and a lack of social distancing. And the reason that it, well, it happened because people started to get up and dance. And as he explained to Michelle, and I believe to Richard Divy as well, he and his daughter made a decision because the night was nearly at an end. From a control of the premises point of view, it was better to let it play out than it was to try and, and prevent it and stop it. He does, he fully accepts that in hindsight, and hindsight is a wonderful thing, that was probably the, the wrong decision. And that there were possibly steps, such as possibly turning the music off, which may have made an impact. Although from talking to him, I, I, I'm not convinced that actually turning the music off at that point would have stopped the singing because the, the, the customers were clearly determined to have a good time and, and see the last thirty minutes out. With regard to the-
Mr Faulkner, apologies. Can I just interrupt you? There's quite a lot of feedback. Can I just ask other members of the, of this call, if they could just make sure that they're muted just to minimise any, any background noise? Thank you. I think it is coming from, from you, your end, Mr Faulkner. So if you wouldn't mind just speaking up a little bit, I am having trouble hearing.
Right, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll turn this down. I'll try and turn the, because we've got you on television and I've, I've on. That hopefully, hopefully will help. With regard to the, to the photographs of Jonathan Carr appearing to, to lead the, the, the singing and the dancing, he strongly denies that he was, he was leading it. He does accept that he did rise towards, at the very end, he'd get slightly carried away with the, with the moment. And the video footage is literally just before the, the premises was closed. The photograph of him with the drinking out of the bottle was actually after closing time. And that was, it was, there was a member of, one of the members of staff, it was their birthday, and they were having a drink while they were clearing up at the end of the, at the end of the evening. With regards to the, the incident on the twenty third of December, I've been asked to point out that quite a lot has been made of this as, as a lack of control of the, the patrons and the customers at the premises and lack of social distancing. The, the incident actually occurred, it was after the premises had closed and people were, were leaving and people were waiting outside for taxis. And the, and it was, it was a very wet night, and those of you familiar with the premises will know there is a sort of an archway there leading to the premises where people were gathered under it to try and keep out of the rain. The incident actually occurred when one of the, there was a young lad who had come over from Turtle Bay where he'd been drinking. He actually hadn't been in Bedford's at all. I think he had tried to get in earlier but had been refused entry. Because they were, they were basically up to capacity at that point already. He'd then go off to Turtle Bay with his, his friends and then he'd come back over the road after, after everywhere had closed. And that was when the altercation happened and the, the issues happened. And the staff were basically trying to, to minimise it by getting people to disperse. So I think the, it's fair to say that incident did not start in Bedford's, nor were all the people there, customers of Bedford's from, from that night. I would as well reiterate the, the points which, which have been made, I think very fairly by Michelle and by Richard, that the, the premises have had a, Mr Carr's actually been there since twenty thirteen, not twenty seventeen, as Michelle said. So seven, seven odd years they've been there. There's been very little trouble over that time. The premises have been, I think, generally considered to be very well run. There'd be no issues apart from the police concerned or, or the licensing team. And indeed, during, during lockdown or during the sort of the pandemic, similarly, there, there have been very few issues. I don't know whether you want me to go through now the, the chronology that Michelle has, has produced, but I mean, but I mean, there are a number of things, points on there, or a number of, a number of visits. But, but in the vast majority of them, everything was, was found to be okay. Michelle mentioned the assault and the lack of the police being called. This is the one on the twelfth of July, twenty twenty, when the police weren't called initially and the ambulance were. I understand the reason for that was that the, the person who had been assaulted didn't want the police involved. He didn't want to press charges at that time and didn't want the police involved. The ambulance was called because he had basically been knocked unconscious.
And can I say in the last seven, in the last seven years, I've never called a place when it's been an incident, but dealt with ourselves.
Right, David, could you, could you hear that? Sorry, sorry, Mr Carr was just saying that in the, in the seven years when, when, that he's been there, when there's been incidents like that, if somebody has been hurt, he's phoned the ambulance first and dealt with the, dealt with the issue himself. And that's never been a, never been a, a problem. So, so I mean, so dealing with those visits, the, the, the first one, the twenty eighth of March, so that's just after the first lockdown starts. There was reports receiving the music coming from the bar. I believe those reports came from, from a neighbouring premises. The, 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 the police did visit about seventeen minutes after the, the report. The reason the music was coming from the premises is that Mr Carr, well, both Glenn and Jonathan were working on the, I think, were refurbishing the toilets in the premises and they were playing loud music. So nothing to do with breach of lockdown or anything. On the, the eleventh of July, there was a visit, ten minutes past eleven. That was a standard, sort of regular public order visit. And there were no incidents, so clearly there was no sort of issue with coronavirus regulations or anything other similar. The twelfth of July I've just dealt with. And again, seventeenth of July, police visit to the premises. They confirmed there was a one-way system in operation, the area upstairs marked out, toilets were being monitored, et cetera. Twenty fifth was of August was a burglary at the premises on the fifth of September. The, the, again, the victim didn't want to get, there was, it was an assault, but again, the victim didn't want to get the police involved and it was dealt with by the, the staff at the premises. On the seventh of September, there was a telephone call and that was basically just to check that, that was Mr Carr checking the, with the police what the situation was with regard to the regulations, whether it held this event. Tenth of October, there was a theft of a handbag from the premises, sadly not an uncommon thing in, in premises such as, such as this and sort of on a, people on a night out when they're not being as particularly careful, as careful as they might otherwise be. Thirty first of October, there was a report of the bar not socially distancing when the police visited. They found everything to be, to be in order. And then we come to the, the fourth of November and the, the incident in question. The, the, and then the, I think the, the rest of it, again, is fairly self-explanatory, really. There was a, a, a report of drugs being dealt with, dealt on the premises. But again, nothing seems to have, there was no follow-up from that. And then we come to the visits where there was a, the conversation about producing the CCTV footage. At that point, there was the police attended, they went inside and they, they again found nothing, nothing untoward. And there was a complaint on the twelfth, twelfth of December, but that doesn't appear to have been, been followed up. And then I dealt with the, to an extent, the, the assault on the, the twenty third of December, which is to say was largely, or involved to an extent, people who hadn't been in the premises at all and were actually just sheltering under the, under the archway and out of the rain. I mean, overall, the, the, Mr, the, the Carrs have put a lot of effort into COVID nineteen precautions and have, they've got, they, they always sought advice where, where they felt it necessary. Sometimes that advice wasn't, wasn't actually available because we've all been sort of finding our way through the, feeling our way through these, through the pandemic to an extent. But they do use, they use track and trace using their QR codes, there's signage up outside the premises explaining what's expected of, of customers with regard to social distancing, mask wearing, et cetera. Tables are separated, they've reduced their numbers upstairs to, I believe, fifty five. Um, tables are, are separated, they've reduced their numbers, uh, upstairs to, I believe 55, if you say. 56 is total numbers upstairs, uh, to, uh, to increase the space. Um, and they, they've, they've got a one-way system restricting numbers going to the toilets at, at any one time, et cetera. Um, and, uh, and I think as we've heard from, uh, from Richard Dibby and from Michelle, have generally run a very tight ship when it comes to these things. Um, I think they would accept that, that, uh, on the night in question, um, it, things did get too relaxed at the end. Um, much has been, has been made of the, uh, and I'm sure will be when Richard takes us through the videos of the, the, what happened. Um, and the sort of the, the lack of social distancing and greetings and things, um, in the premises earlier on in the evening. A lot of that was between the staff and whilst it probably shouldn't have, shouldn't have occurred. They are, they were to a certain extent in their own sort of bubble, if you like. Um, in terms of the staff wearing masks, um, several of them had medical dispensation not to. Um, and so, uh, including, uh, uh, both, both Mr. Cars. Um, so I mean, essentially, as I say, our, our case is that, um, that overall the premises have been run extremely well throughout the pandemic period. Uh, there was a, 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 in hindsight, a poor decision made by Mr. Carr at the end of the night on the, uh, the 4th of November, which led to the, to the, to the breaches. Um, the, the complaints, the, the complaints, um, that were raised came from, uh, as I understand it, from, from other, uh, operators who had been informed of the, the stuff that had been put on social media by, um, uh, some of the customers. Um, the, 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 the reason for the complaints really is, is irrelevant. My client accepts that, that, um, the situation wasn't, wasn't ideal at the end of the night. Um, but, uh, in my submission to, to, um, revoke the license, uh, would be grossly disproportionate given all the circumstances, um, of the, uh, of the matter. Um, and I think at this, at this stage, that, that probably sets out where we're coming from.
We'd like to say something first. Johnny would like to say something, I'd like to say something.
Right, and I think both.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. Um, okay, um, so members of the committee first, uh, do you have any questions for, uh, Richard, Michelle or for, um, uh, the licence holder? Please, um, so, um, and I, I will just start, um, myself by rephrasing my earlier question and asking, uh, Richard. Um, we've had from Michelle, um, and we've, we've gone through this, uh, document that starts on page 32 of the papers, uh, outlining the, the police, uh, summary involvement. Um, so Richard, um, how many complaints in total have we had about this venue relating to COVID-19 restrictions?
Yeah, as I was, um, saying earlier, Chair, the, um, the COVID restrictions did at times swamp us with issues. So, uh, really the indication of the figures that we were getting at the time was there just to say that we would normally have responded in a more appropriate manner to, uh, many of these complaints. Um, so, uh, the venue at times were not aware if we were getting some issues and we weren't always able to visit all premises to respond to all complaints, which is our, would be our normal manner. Um, especially since, um, many venues like this, uh, are not always open throughout the day and, uh, so that we're able to interact properly with them. Um, the, as I said, the complaint, we received one complaint in August, three in September and four in October, which is, uh, goes on a background of not having any complaints in the previous three years. So we, those complaints were mainly that, um, social distancing wasn't ideal in the premises. And also some noise complaints from, uh, a local resident and from a member of the public walking past the front of the venue during the day, that was.
Okay.
So it is, there's a wide range there, but, uh, and obviously these are often, um, coming to us through separate routes than police, but sometimes they do come to us via the police. So some of those incidents may be related to the, uh, reports to police. So sometimes you do get a double handling of issues. So, uh, numbers aren't, you know, always cumulative in when you add up what complaints the council receive and what the police receive.
Okay, thank you. Um, right, well, we'll have a series of questions for, um, for the licensee. Um, and, uh, also I think, uh, there'll be an opportunity for you, Mr. Faulkner, or your, or your clients to, to ask questions of, of, uh, Richard, um, and Michelle. Uh, so first of all, um, uh, members of the committee, uh, who'd like to go first, please, uh, councillor Yosef.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to direct my first question to Mr. Glenn Carr, if that's okay. On the first page of our additional papers, there's an email that you've sent to Richard, Michelle and Richard, in which you appear to imply that the complaints that you've received are vindictive in nature because they come from rival businesses and are such not valid. I was just wondering if you could, um, expand on that a little bit. Do you have any proof of this claim?
Um, yeah, I do actually, um. From, from when we were allowed to open on the 4th of July from the first lockdown, we had many complaints directed at us from Frank's Bar, one of our next-door neighbours, um, about noise, about lack of social distancing, et cetera, et cetera. And each time those complaints were, came forward, as the business owner and the licensee, I dealt with them. Um, the, you've got to understand the layout of my bar and the outside area. At the back of the premises is where we send people to smoke. And at times you would have up to 15, 20 people standing in groups of three and four, with, obviously with no masks on, smoking and socialising. And I believe that, um, that the complaints which were coming from, uh, Frank's Bar were relating to those people. And, uh, you know, with the best will in the world, um, when people are standing in an area of approximately 15 by 20 feet, they are gonna, they are gonna be closer than normal. You know, all the, all the, um, people who were on the outside area, under the, under the marquee, were all seated, uh, socially distanced. Um, and I think, you know, I think one thing which has been sort of missed through all of this is that we were by a country mile the busiest venue in Norwich through the whole of this COVID-19, uh, process. Uh, and there wasn't another bar as busy as, as we were. And I will admit, and I am sure you appreciate, working with the sporadic, uh, um, details which came down from government and from local, uh, local authority. The rules changed so regularly that it was very difficult really to determine what we were supposed to be doing and what we weren't supposed to be doing. Um, and I think this is borne out in the fact also that when I was speaking to Richard Dibby and, uh, BC Spinks and Michelle herself, and I've asked questions of what I am supposed to do as a business owner, that there hasn't been that much forthcoming and that's because the government hadn't advised them. So listen, I'm not looking for excuses at all. The incident on the 4th of November was a misjudgment by myself. I, I hold my hands up and not to try to cover it up at all. The, the lack of CCTV doesn't look great, but there was a technical issue. I run a 16-camera system. Uh, because of break-ins, I'd ask my, um, uh, guy to change the cameras how they work so they recorded all the time. And if somebody came onto my premises at three o'clock in the morning, I would get a notification on my phone. So I knew who was on my premises. What I didn't know at the time was by changing the camera settings, that it was gonna overwrite or instead of in 31 days of footage, I'd have 14. I didn't know that at the time. Um, you know, I mean, to answer your question, and I think it's borne out in the fact, sorry?
I was trying to ask the question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's borne out in the fact that the, uh, three complaints which have brought this review on also came from other venues and somebody who worked in another venue and not the general public. And as, as, um, Bruce has just proved, every time I had a COVID officer or a police officer visit my premises, everything was in order, um, right throughout. So, so this is a one-off incident. Um, I've been a doorman in Norwich City, serving the public for 32 years. You know, I'm not an idiot. And so the decision I made on the 4th of November, I made genuinely because I thought, rather than trying to sit 30 or 40 people down and cause even more aggravation, with the small amount of time that was left to run to us closing at 10 o'clock, I thought my customers would have been a lot safer to let it play out and, and let them disperse without, without any intervention. In hindsight, it probably was the wrong decision, you know, but I think you all need to afford me a little bit of respect in that I have run a bar in the city centre, one of the busiest bars in the city centre. I have never, in one since seven years, had the police to my door for trouble, you know? Because I deal with it myself, I've got the experience as a door supervisor to be able to do that. And I, you know, I just think, um, you know, I made a mistake. I've admitted that if I lose my licence because of, because of it, then I'm a man, I'll take it on the chin. But I'm, I really do not think that the incident of the 4th, 4th of November justifies my licence being taken away.
Thank you, Mr. Carr, that was very informative.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, councillor Ackroyd, please.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, you said in that same email, the email of the 11th, um, that you had an incident towards the end of the night where you addressed the room thanking everyone, uh, for conforming. And I wondered, just to get this into my head and get it right, what kind of time that would have been? Because obviously, um, by 9:30, it, it wasn't something you felt you could do anymore. So I just wondered if you could say a little bit about that. I know we can't see it because it's disappeared from the CCTV, I understand that, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, all I can say is it would, it would have, must have been somewhere in time between nine and half past nine. Um, I don't remember to be fair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I just have a follow-up to that. You mentioned the smoking area. Um, and, uh, do you have, um, uh, any, uh, restrictions for the numbers of people that can, um, enter the smoking area? And had you considered this as a, as a possibility? Uh, and if, if not, if, if it's, if not, uh, why would it not be possible?
Yeah, we do have, we do have restrictions. We allow up to 20 people in the area and no more, and that's controlled by my doorman and myself. And then people are asked to go back inside or sit down at their table outside until such time there's, you know, um, less than 20 people.
Okay, and the 20, is that based on the space that you have?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Right, um, and, uh, on the, um, on the evening of the 4th, when, uh, things began to, uh, become a, a little bit out of hand, um, uh, you said that you made the decision to, uh, to let things run, uh, run their course. Um, what options do you consider were open to you at, at that time?
Um, many options, to be honest with you, but.
Yeah, could you through them?
Yeah, I mean, I could have turned the music off. I could have stood up on the, on the stage and showed and told everybody to sit down. But given the fact that the decision was made in a split second, looking at the state of the room, looking at how animated my customers were, I really thought that I would be causing my staff, myself and my doorman more problems trying to, trying to sit these guys down rather than let it play out. I mean, um, I mean, I don't, I don't want to refer to other incidents which have happened in, in the, in the UK, but the police used what they called it deflective tactics, where they stand back and watch rather than actually do something about it. Well, that's exactly what I did. I made the decision in my head and that I just, you know, to say that I didn't have control of the venue is, is not right because I did have complete control, which is that I dealt with it the way I thought was best at the time. And, and like I said, with hindsight, it probably wasn't the greatest decision I've made in my life.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I, I also must tell you that, um, my day job is I'm a foster parent. I've been a foster parent for 12 years and I'm, I'm making decisions about other people's children every day of the week. And sometimes I make mistakes because I'm human, you know? And on this night, I was under a lot of pressure and I made a mistake. And that is the truth of it, you know, I'm not here to try and make up a story, that is the truth. I made a decision at the time at what I thought was correct and it turns out I wasn't.
Okay, and, and another option to you on the evening would have been to close at that point and, uh, ask people to leave, is that?
Yeah, if you look at the CCTV footage, it was four minutes to go before we were closed anyway.
Okay, uh, when we saw, um.
Yeah, it started about 25 to 10, but the actual, you know, I mean, uh, yes, I could have closed then, I could, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, any follow-up questions from councillors or additional ones? Councillor Ackroyd, please.
Yes, it was just simply, um, you've just talked about, you know, you could have closed. And I just wondered how it panned out when you did close, you know, obviously you'd got everybody, you know, having a really good time. Um, did it, how, how did it then work when you, when it was closure time and, and people were leaving? Um, did you feel that happened safely with people calming down, exiting?
Yeah, it did happen safely, but, but also you must, you must understand that, um, you know, the, on this particular evening, my customers were a young bunch and, um, with the best will in the world, you can ask people to do things, but they had their own minds, they had alcohol inside them, they were animated. Uh, when we, when we turned the lights up and, and, and shepherded the people out, they left very quickly. And there could be argued that I could have done that at half past nine, but like I said, I didn't do that. And I fully admit that I didn't do that, uh, Caroline. So, you know, I, and I've got no, I've got no justification why I did what I did other than the fact that at the time I thought it was the safest thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, um, any other questions at the moment? Um, okay, I have, um, I have a, a few questions, um, at this stage. And if, uh, we could refer to, uh, annex two of the, uh, of the conditions. Um, and that is on page, uh, 25, uh, of the report. I'll just, uh, give you an opportunity to define that. That's the form now. So that's, uh, page 25, um, and that's annex two, the, the annex two. These are conditions, uh, consistent with the operating schedule. They're addition, in addition to, uh, the, uh, mandatory conditions. Um, and there's a, there's a, there's a long list there of, of items that the premises is obliged to undertake. And so, um, do you have, um, records, uh, of the, uh, the items here? So, um, just for example, starting with item two, uh, uh, training, uh, for staff on crime prevention and health and safety initiatives. When, when was your last training session for staff, please?
We, I, I haven't got an answer for you, Ian, because, um, I don't know when my last training session was. What you've got to understand is my staff change quite regularly. Um, you certainly do in the summer months, et cetera. Um, all, all my staff, uh, you know, we, we have informal chats, we have debriefs at the end of nights. We have, uh, get-togethers at the beginning of shifts to discuss how, how the, the evening's gonna pan out and what we're gonna do. Um, but as far as training is concerned, then no. I'm not gonna lie.
Thank you.
That's ongoing, Bruce, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, so on the job train already, yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, um, you, I mean, the, the first thing we do with any new member of staff is show them around the whole property, uh, tell them where the fire, you know, where the fire, uh, congregation point is in the event of a fire. Um, you know, there, there are things we do as a matter of course, but, um, most of the training is done on the hock, on the job.
Okay, so you've had, you, you confirmed that there's been. Okay, so you've had, you you confirmed that there's been no recent specific training on crime prevention and health and safety initiatives?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, and uh, when was your last uh, last risk assessment, please?
Um, I paid a company in September to do a Covid nineteen uh, risk assessment, a company called Britannia Health and Safety. Um, I did a risk assessment myself prior to that, um, after the first lockdown when we came back to work on the fourth of July.
Okay, thank you. Um, and we've had, we've heard about CCTV. Um, item number seven, uh, the uh, uh, you're required to be a member of the Norwich Pub Watch scheme um, and attend uh, three meetings a year. Um, are they online at the moment, those meetings? When when was the last one that you attended? And have you attended three?
Well, I'm gonna have to hold my hands up and tell you, what? And and tell you this, that in the seven years I've had the pub, I was never aware that I had to be a part of the Norwich Pub Watch scheme.
Shall I come in on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, um, the Pub Watch scheme does change over time. And although there is some late night economy, um, venues, events carried out, it no longer operates under the Pub Watch scheme. But um, I believe that there is the Late Night Economy Group who sometimes hold meetings. Um, but the invites are limited to people that have already uh, uh, joined the group, as it were. So it isn't always a very productive condition in this sort of license. But we do encourage people to engage with the Late Night Economy Norwich Group.
Okay, so is it therefore, um, uh, fair to say, David, that item number seven on that annex is irrelevant?
It sounds like it's embarrassingly out of date, Chair, yes.
Yes, okay, right. Um, and drug awareness training, again, when when was that last conducted, please?
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Ian, I'm sorry.
Item number eight, apologies, item number eight, uh, staff to receive uh, drug awareness training.
Okay, well, we talk about drugs every time we're open, uh, because unfortunately, in this day and age, drugs are very prevalent. And as a doorman of thirty two years, I've seen it all, you know. Uh, I am very anti-drug, have been all my life. I've watched three people die in Norwich because of drugs. And when I was a young doorman in my early twenties, I saw a young man drown in the river down on Riverside. That was to do with drugs. So I've always had a really, really tight drug policy. Anybody caught uh, dealing or taking drugs on my premises are ejected immediately and barred for life. Um, and I I make no bones about that. And if you, if you could speak to some of the more old school um, door supervisors, they would tell you exactly the same, what my attitude towards drugs is.
Okay, thank you. Um, item nine on on this list uh, refers to your staff. So this is just a a general question. How many staff do you employ? And how many?
And up to fourteen, depending on what we've got on. Um, normally, certainly during this Covid period, we had up to eight members of staff, including myself. Or ten. Yeah, and it changes all the time, really, Ian, depending on what we have on, um.
So that's, so then there'd be eight on on the premises, um, on on a typical?
And uh, all my bar staff are radioed up in in contact with both me and my doorman. Um, as an owner, um, I think this is quite usual in Norwich City Centre, but as an owner, for seven years I've had Bedford's Bar, I stand on the front door. I hold, I hold a current SIA licence still, and I've just renewed my badge until twenty twenty five. Um, and a lot of people ask me the reason I do that. You own the bar, why are you standing out here in the cold? Well, I do it for one reason and one reason only, and that is using my thirty two years' experience. I know all the drug dealers, I know all the troublemakers, I know all the people I don't want in my bar. And by standing there, I can control who I have in my bar. And that is proven to work, because the police have never attended my venue once in seven years uh, for for trouble, you know, um, prior to the twenty third of December, you know. And I was, I I was interested to hear, you know, uh, people talk about why won't the police call when somebody was assaulted? Well, that particular instance, um, the guy who got marked out didn't want the police call. But in every instant when there's trouble at the bar, I don't call the police, I deal with it with my security staff. You know, that's what I pay them to do. Um, and we always call an ambulance if that's necessary. But I think over the seven years, we've had an ambulance to our venue more than seven or eight times in seven years, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Um, and just on that particular subject, while I've mentioned it, um, Michelle, um, uh, and other members of the call, um, are the, are licence holders obliged to inform the police of such incidents?
Sorry, Chair, can you, can you ask the question again? It was about ambulance, call us.
Yes.
Ambulance came as well, did you mean?
Mister Carr was describing, um, when there are incidents, um, at the venue. Um, are are licence holders obliged to inform the police of incidents, especially where an ambulance might be called?
If it was an incident of disorder or there'd been a fight and someone was hurt, then obviously that could then be part of an investigation and police should be called because it could be that we then need to deal with the suspect and carry out the investigation. Also, the ambulance service is sometimes concerned that things can then um, get worse with the situation and they could get hurt. Um, so a lot of the time, they will, if they believe that they might be in danger, they sometimes call us as well. Um, we do say that if if we feel that there has been an incident and we might need to investigate it, it's best that we're there sort of soon as possible. And on Friday and Saturday nights, normal times, there would be somebody sort of patrolling on Prince Wells Road and out and about anyway. So it wouldn't take much for us to come and have a visit. So, so I think that, yes, they should call us. If, I mean, if someone phoned down the stairs, then not necessarily, but if it's a fight or an altercation, something like that, then yes, it should be us that get involved.
Can I just add, can I just add to that, uh, please, Michelle and Ian? Um, you know, with with my whole thirty years plus experience, um, I've been in many situations where the police have been called. And and I have to say, they never turn up in time to do anything anyway. So for me to take on the the job as a door supervisor and protect my customers and not call the police, um, I think I'm doing, I'm doing the police service plus the public service as well, do you know what I mean? I I just, I I find it a little bit, listen, if somebody really, if somebody got stabbed on my venue, I would definitely call the police. But if somebody got slapped right in the face, I wouldn't. I would deal with it myself and my my security staff. You know, that's what I paid to do.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, if I can just, um.
Yes, sir.
Let's say the the incident on the twenty third of December, the um, the actual, uh, the the assault actually took place well, well, on Exchange Street, well, well away from the, from the premises. The 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 minor altercation started um, uh, under the archway, um, at the premises. But the the actual assault, which which has led to the investigation, uh, took place on Exchange Street and the police were called straight away.
If if we can discuss that one sort of separately, Chair, without the public, then I can sort of go into a bit more detail with that one. That would be really useful. Thanks.
Please, we'll, we'll do that a little bit later. And the, I'm aware that that David wants to speak, so let's hear from David first, please.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Yes, I was just going to flag, if your question was, is there an obligation under the Licensing Act two thousand and three? Then, no, it's not on the premises licence as an obligation. If your question was a slightly more general assisting the crime prevention licensing objective, then of course, that's a different matter. So it's a slightly grey area there, but I cannot see an obligation on this premises, under their premises licence, to get the police involved in every incident.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's very useful. Um, uh, Michelle, would you like to respond, um, to uh, Mister Carr's response? No?
No, I haven't really got anything else to add. So if I can talk about the incident later, that, I think that will just help us describe what what our concerns are relating to dealing with things. Thanks.
Yeah, okay, absolutely. Right, um, apologies for that. Um, I'll return to the the list on page twenty five. Um, and that's, um, uh, we've, we've covered item number eleven. Um, and um, there's a number of risk assessments, um, uh, accident or emergency and fire. Uh, um, again, um, I, have you carried out any risk assessments recently? And have you made any of those available to the authority or the police?
Yeah, I paid, I paid a company to come and do a complete brand new fire risk assessment in September. Um, uh, I can only remember his first name, David. Um, I also arranged for all my staff to receive new fire training. Um, but unfortunately, that had to be stopped because of Covid. Um, I spoke to David last week. He phoned me to say that he had spoken to somebody, the council or somebody, to say that he's now got permission to carry on with that fire training. And that's something I plan to put in place next week for all my staff. Um, I've also arranged to have all brand new fire extinguishers put throughout the venue, um, mainly because I'm inspecting them, some were okay, some weren't, and for what it costs, I said I'd rather start with all new ones.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll move on. Uh, we've heard about capacity, because obviously during this period, the capacity has been reduced. So I won't talk about item number fifteen. Um, items seventeen and eighteen, um, uh, music, um, and windows being shut. Uh, can you confirm that you comply with those um, items? Um, and also, um, a question for Michelle, um, Richard, to confirm uh, whether we've had complaints on these matters. So Mister Carr first.
Yeah, we've had, um, we've had a few noise complaints over the years, to be honest with you. They've all been dealt with. Um, Tony Shearwood, we normally have a, normally have a telephone conversation on those. Um, it wasn't that many years ago that I sat in front of the licensing, oh, sorry, the council committee and asked to have live music outside in my courtyard, um, which I know, uh, Richard was present at that. And, um, long story short, I was granted the fact that I could have live music outside in my courtyard, albeit there were some restrictions on the length of time, et cetera. Um, noise has always been an issue because Bedford's Bar is a seventeenth century building and all the windows in the building are single glaze. You know, I've tried really hard over the last seven years to keep everybody happy. Uh, we've had numerous times where, um, uh, um, people who work at Frank's Bar have come and asked us to turn the music down. On all, on every occasion, I've done it. You know, the trouble is with some of our DJ events, the bass is quite bassy and it resonates across the roadway and into the adjoining restaurant. And I'm very aware of that. And we try extremely hard to make sure that we are conforming. During Covid, um, you know, uh, noise levels were restricted to eighty A-rated decibels, A-rated decibels. Um, I I went out and bought a a professional um, decibel meter to make sure we were conforming. And in fact, for everybody in this meeting, eighty A-rated decibels is quite loud. Um, it's not background music by any stretch of the imagination. It is quite loud. But we were playing, when we had DJs on site, we were playing between sixty and seventy A-rated decibels. But noise does travel, and especially during the Covid period when the city was pretty quiet. You know, we were, we were one of only a few venues open. So any music of any volume would carry across the city because there was nothing to dampen the noise down. Um, you know, interestingly enough, on the chronology of incidents which have happened at my bar over the last twelve months, one thing I don't think which was included is when, after the first lockdown, I had live music in my bar. I was the first person in Norwich. In fact, I think I was the first person in the country to have a live band play. And uh, Richard Spings was contacted by a member of the public about noise. I think Richard was on leave, so his boss came down, the sergeant, whose name I forget, with a body, with a body cam, done a video of the venue to make sure that we were performing with the Covid rules. And as I understand it, there was a report sent to the council and everything was seen to be okay. The only thing the police sergeant said to me when he left the premises was, it's bloody loud. And I said, well, it's a live band. It's going to be loud. And there were no restrictions on noise as far as live music, um, uh, within the Covid rules. There was only for background music that they restricted us to eighty A-rated decibels.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, obviously, the uh, uh, music is is not the central part of this particular. Uh, but it it is relevant to some of the, um, some of the items on the on the list. And David, please. Are you muted, David?
Irritating. Thank you, Chair. You've touched on what I was going to flag, which is the question of relevance of noise complaints. Um, it wasn't part of the review application. And you're going to be considering the application and any relevant representations when you decide the matters um, in front of you. So, um, clearly you were happy to ask, clearly Mister Carr was happy to answer. But I would just flag again that noise, I do not believe, is part of this review hearing reason.
Uh, no, it's not. And the reason why I asked the question is because just going through the list of conditions um, from and looking at this from a management point of view. Um, thank you for bearing with me. The the last question I've got is on item number twenty. Uh, the, um, uh, the, uh, and uh, tr- the treatment of, uh, of those who attempt to buy alcohol underage. Uh, what is your policy and procedures on that, please? And what records do you keep?
Okay, so as far as underage drinking is concerned, I can hold my hand up and say, actually, in seven years, we've never really had a problem with it. All my, all my bar staff are very experienced and got some years behind them. They are all very vigilant. Um, the fact that I stand on the door and check IDs on on the patrons as they come into the premises, along with my, um, um, SIA doorman, we, you know, underage drinking has not been a problem at Bedford's Bar, never, never.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Mister Faulkner, um, I believe I cut across you as you were about to speak, so would you like to add anything?
No, I was just, I was just actually gonna thank Dave, thanking David for pointing out that the noise complaints weren't strictly relevant for these proceedings.
That, that has been noted. Thank you. Um, any other questions at this stage, please? Okay, um, I've got a, I've just got a a more sort of general question about the incident on the, on the fourth. So obviously, um, hopefully this will be as relevant as it can be. Can you describe to me, Mister Carr, the, um, the Covid restrictions that were in place on that day? Can you outline those restrictions that were in place on the fourth?
At five premises?
Uh, at all premises.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what what legislation was in place at the time, please?
What legislation? So it was, um, uh, two metre social distance and groups of six indoors had to be from the same bubble. Um, masks were to be worn, uh, when walking through the venue, uh, whether that be to be seated or to go to the toilet. Um, Johnny, can you help me?
So outside mixed household were allowed up to six.
Yeah.
And curfew, I believe, was the only other thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I can't remember, to be honest with you. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're very aware of, uh, of the, um, Covid restrictions in place, um, both before, after and and whilst, and on the fourth of November, yeah.
Okay, so, um, and at the time, um, you said that masks uh, had to be worn when walking through the venue, for, uh, so for example, uh, when arriving, leaving and going to the toilets. Um, uh, and, uh, also you were aware, of course, that there was no, uh, uh, no standing at tables, um, concerned.
I am aware of that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I mean, I mean, if you, if you look from the time when we reopened on the fourth of July, right through to when we closed on the twenty third of December, um, I would say ninety, ninety percent of the time, my venue was probably one of the safest venues in the city. And I have to, I have to congratulate my young customers in in conforming. And I have to, I have to congratulate my young customers in, in conforming most of the time. There, there was a few individuals who had to be talked to on several occasions by me and some of my staff. But all, all told, you know, they behaved exceptionally well, they really did, I was quite impressed. You know, I mean, these are kids we're talking about, eighteen to twenty five, you know, and they, they were respectful, both to my venue and, and the COVID rules and regulations. And I think that's borne out by the fact that all the complaints received, both by the general public to the, to the police and by other venues to the police, each time they visited, the COVID inspectors or the police, they found nothing wrong. And, and I think it really is important that that, that point is made, because on the Thursday, when we were allowed to reopen after the November lockdown, I had five visits in four hours from COVID inspectors, including Richard Divy on two occasions, you know, and at one point, I had seven inspectors standing outside Dogfish, which is to the right of my entrance, for a period of about thirty five minutes. And I felt intimidated, you know, because at the end of the day, they'd been to my venue, they'd checked out, everything was okay, but they still felt they had to stand outside my venue, you know, and I've heard some other horror stories from other, other owners in the city. You know, we were there, they should have been there to help us.
Mr Carr, sorry to interrupt you, I think we, we, we probably won't talk about other venues in this hearing. I'm aware that Richard Divy has a question, but before we hear from Mr Divy, just, you did partially answer my next question, which was about what procedures would you take and what procedures do you take when somebody in your venue is breaching those rules? So for example, standing up, dancing or, or approaching the bar?
Well, nobody approached the bar, because in my venue, as you can see on the video footage, there's five tables of four up against the bar, nobody could really get to the bar. All my staff were instructed to a point, if somebody was standing up or not wearing a mask, just be polite and ask them to sit down, ask them to put the mask on when they go into the toilet. But several of my staff are young girls, I wouldn't, you know, the amount of abuse my staff had received over the course of last year during the pandemic is unbelievable. And I've always told my staff, deal with it if you think you can, if you can't, you've got a radio, then call me, Johnny or my doorman and we'll come and deal with it. You know, with the best will in the world, again, you know, we did our very best. And as, as a business owner, I'm always, always put the safety and wellbeing of both my staff and my clients, my customers, at the forefront of everything we do, everything we do. You know, this isolated incident is something which is not the norm for Bedford's Bar. It's one of the safest venues you can see.
Thank you. To, to confirm, customers were both well behaved and abusive to your staff?
Oh yeah, yeah, I mean, over the course of the year, we had, we had both exceptionally well behaved customers, that's why I said ninety percent of my customers behaved impeccably, considering their age and the pressure they were under. But there was the odd ten percent who didn't give a shit about the rules, you know, and excuse me for swearing, but they just didn't care about the rules at all. And then they, they were dealt with in a different way. Or more often than not, they were asked to leave.
Okay, approximately how many people would you say you, you asked to leave during the, the whole restrictions period?
In the course of twenty twenty whilst we were allowed to open, I'd probably say half a dozen.
Okay, right. Thank you to Richard for waiting. Richard Divy, could you?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I just thought it was fair to point out that Glenn Carr has been one of the licence holders who has approached us, trying to understand the legislation. And we have given guidance when we've been able to, but it isn't always been available to us before the restrictions have come in. So just wanted to confirm that he has sought advice.
Thank you, thank you for that, yes, I understand that, that on several occasions, the government introduced new legislation and then the guidance was provided to, to everybody involved, perhaps even just the day before everything was due to take place, which made it difficult for local authorities, for licensees, and of course for their legal representatives as well to understand. Okay, so we have, we, we've had a number of questions, we haven't yet heard from Richard Spinks. Richard, is there anything that you'd like to say at this stage, or would you like to wait for the under the, under the nine item?
I'd like to wait until it's, talking about incidents, please.
Yeah, okay, so we'll wait for below the line, which, and the exclusion of the public, which will be shortly, I believe. Any further questions from members of the committee at this stage? Okay, no, I'm not seeing any. And David, Michelle and Richard, nothing at this stage? Okay, David?
No, I was just going to confirm nothing, thank you Chair.
Okay, okay, so that means probably at this stage, it's probably time to end this part of the meeting and move into, and consider exclusion of the public for the following part of the meeting, where we will see some CCTV footage. And that footage identifies members of the public, so therefore, we should consider viewing that in private, so.
Chair, if it assists, the hearing regulations are quite straightforward, the hearing shall take place in public, except where the licensing authority consider excluding the public as appropriate, as the public interest in doing so outweighs the public interest in the, that part of the hearing taking place in public. So you need to consider the public interest and then over to you.
Yes, thank you, okay, so members of the committee, any comments on that? I would like to propose that we do move the, the next part of the meeting into, and exclude the public. So are you both in agreement with that?
Yes, in agreement, yes.
Yeah, thank you, I'm seeing an indication also from Council of the Easies. Lucy, please describe what's next, please.
Can I suggest Chair, that you take maybe a five minute break while we make sure that we've got everything sorted from our end and we will cut the live stream on YouTube shortly. And then we'll return, once you've got a decision to live stream on YouTube.
Okay, thank you. So from our point of view, we will return and discuss these items about half past twelve. And in the meantime, we will cut the feed and then return later. So if you wouldn't mind telling us when the feed has?